Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Hey, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, August 3, Sioux Falls City Council meeting. Thanks for being here with us tonight. We'll go ahead and get started by reading our role, please, Tom.
Council members, Nitzer.
Here.
Selberg.
Here.
Sale.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Brecky.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Kylie.
Here.
All right. Here to give our invocation tonight is Reverend John Langarak. He's with the Heritage Protestant Reformed Church. Reverend, thanks for being here. We'd ask that you stand for his invocation and then remain standing for our Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I'll read a few verses from Proverbs 4, Proverbs 11. Riches do not profit in the day of wrath, but righteousness delivers from death. The righteousness of the blameless keeps his way straight, but the wicked falls by his own wickedness. The righteousness of the upright delivers them, but the treacherous are taken captive by their lust. When the wicked dies, his hope will perish, and the expectation of wealth perishes, too. The righteous is delivered from trouble, and the wicked walks into it instead. With his mouth, a godless man would destroy his neighbor, but by knowledge, the righteous are delivered. When it goes well with the righteous, the city rejoices, and when the wicked perish, there are shouts of gladness. By the blessing of the upright, a city is exalted, but by the mouth of the wicked, it is overthrown. Whoever belittles his neighbor lacks sense, but a man of understanding remains silent. Whoever goes about slandering reveals secrets, but he who is trustworthy in spirit keeps a thing covered. Where there is no guidance, a people falls, but in an abundance of counselors, there is safety. Would you join me in prayer? Almighty God and Heavenly Father, grant wisdom to our mayor and members of our city council in this meeting. Help them remember that righteousness and not riches or wealth delivers from death. Give them the understanding that keep silent and listens till others have spoken. Guide them so they may guide our city and its citizens, and make this assembly a safe place through the abundance of counselors that is here. Forgive us for our treachery, belittling our neighbor, slandering others, and revealing secrets. I pray in Jesus' name, and pray, Lord Jesus, pray for us. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Reverend Langarak. I saw you guys writing notes when he said where there's abundance of counselors, there is safety. We're still going to only keep it to eight counselors, though, right now, so. All right. We will move forward with our agenda. That's on item four. It's our consent agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Look for a motion to approve our consent agenda.
Move to approve. Second, Jensen.
All right. Motion by Kylie and seconded by Jensen to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on that motion? All right. Let's take a vote on it, please.
Council members, Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Move ahead to item 23. It's our regular agenda. Look for a motion on that, please.
Move to approve of the regular agenda.
Second, Jensen.
All right. Motion by Sale, seconded by Jensen to approve item 23. I believe we have an amendment. Counselor Sale.
Yes. Motion to amend by moving item 43 to immediately follow item 35.
Second, Jensen.
All right. Motion by Sale, seconded by Jensen to move that item through amendment. We'll take a vote on that, please.
Council members, Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Back to the main motion as amended. Any other amendments introduced here? All right. Let's take a vote on that, then, please.
Council members, Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Before we continue on, just want to review public input for tonight, how that will work. For regular agenda items, comments are limited to three minutes unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case, public input will be limited to five minutes. For all regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration at that time only. During general public input, comments will be limited to no more than three minutes per person. So with that being said, we'll move on to our next item, please.
Item 24, new 2021-22 retail malt beverage South Dakota farm wine license for Trifecta Holdings Incorporated, Crown Casino Ellis I, 2916 South Ellis Road, pending final inspections per building services. Item 25, request to add video lottery terminals with the new 2021-22 retail malt beverage South Dakota farm wine license for Trifecta Holdings Incorporated, Crown Casino Ellis I, 2916 South Ellis Road. Item 26, new 2021-22 retail malt beverage South Dakota farm wine license for Trifecta Holdings Incorporated, Crown Casino Ellis II, 2918 South Ellis Road, CUP not required, pending final inspections per building services. Item 27, request to add video lottery terminals with the new 2021-22 retail malt beverage South Dakota farm wine license for Trifecta Holdings Incorporated, Crown Casino Ellis II, 2918 South Ellis Road. Item 28, transfer of 2021-22 retail malt beverage license, including video lottery terminals from Regal Holdings, 41st Street and Ellis Road to Trifecta Holdings Incorporated, Crown Casino Ellis III, 2920 South Ellis Road, pending final inspections per building services. Item 29, special one-day liquor license for T-Slat Incorporated to be operated at Five Oaks Venue, 480 East 69th Street for a wedding on August 14, 2021. Item 30, special one-day liquor licenses for T-Slat Incorporated to be operated at Sanford Event Barn, 2510 East 54th Street for weddings on August 14, 21, and 28, 2021. Item 31, special one-day malt beverage license for Holy Spirit Catholic Church, 3601 East Dudley Lane for a church of social on August 29, 2021. Item 32, special one-day liquor licenses for Sioux Falls Sports Authority to be operated at Minnehaw Country Club, course only, 3101 West 22nd Street for PGA Sanford International on September 12 through 19, 2021.
Good evening, Jamie.
Good evening, Jamie Palmer with Licensing. I am happy to answer any questions that you have for items 24 through 32.
All right. Thank you, Jamie. Anyone from the public who would like to speak on items 24 to 32? All right, Counselors, you have any questions on any of those?
Move to approve of Erickson.
Second, Kylie.
Motion by Erickson, seconded by Kylie to approve items 24 to 32. Any discussion there? All right. Hearing none. We'll take a vote, please.
Council members, Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item 33, second reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 6509 South Cliff Avenue from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the Yo Office District, number 14412-2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval three to zero, private applicant, 77th Street Partners LLC, Rich Nazir.
Good evening, Jason.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Jason Bieber of Planning and Development Services. This is an application by Rick Nazir. The owner is the Spirit of Peace Church. It's located west of South Cliff Avenue and north of East 73rd Street. The size is about .06 acres. They're in the southwest corner. The purpose of this is the applicant is looking at combining that .06 acre, excuse me, with the existing office property and construct a future office building.
All right. Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Counselors, you got any questions for Jason on this item?
Move approval. Second, Jensen.
All right. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen to approve item 33. Any discussion there? All right. Let's take a vote, please.
Council members, Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
All right. That item passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item 34, second reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 4501 East 57th Street from the C3 Commercial Community District to the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District, number 14541-2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval three to zero, private applicant, Common Land Two LLC, Brian Solberg.
The applicant here is Brian Solberg. The owner is Greystone Commercial Holdings LLC. It's located at the southwest corner of East 57th Street and South Sycamore Avenue. It's about .15 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is to combine that .15 acres with the existing commercial piece and then construct a strip mall on it.
All right. Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? All right, Counsel. Any questions for Jason here?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Kylie.
All right. Motion by Erickson, seconded by Counselor Kylie on that. Any discussion on that motion? All right. We'll take a vote, please.
Council members, Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Item 43?
35.
35, excuse me, 43.
Item 35, second reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located northeast of West 60th Street and north and North Career Avenue from the C4 Commercial Regional District to the I1 Light Industrial and I2 Heavy Industrial Districts, number 14566-2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval three to zero, private applicant, Enclave Construction LLC, Carrie Franklin.
The applicant is Enclave Construction LLC. The owner is Beverly Griffith Trust. It's located west of I-29 and north of West 60th Street North. It's about 56.8 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking at constructing a future light and a heavy industrial area.
All right. Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item here? Counsel, any questions on item 35?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Jensen.
All right. Motion by Erickson, seconded by Jensen to approve item 35. Any discussion there, Counsel? All right. Let's take a vote on that, please.
Council members, Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen. Kylie.
Yes.
All right. That item passes eight to zero now. On to item 43, which is moved by amendment.
Item 43, a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls approving the preliminary plan of Griffith Park addition. The Planning Commission recommends approval three to zero, private applicant, Enclave Construction LLC, Carrie Franklin.
This is the preliminary subdivision plan that goes along with the rezoning that we just heard. It's about 56.8 acres in size. As indicated before, they're looking at constructing some commercial development along 60th Street and then transition with some light and heavy industrial as you get up towards the interstate.
Thank you, Jason. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? All right, Counsel. Questions here? Look for a motion, please.
Move approval.
Second, Sale.
All right. Motion by Sale and seconded by Selberg to approve item 43. Any discussion on this one? All right. Let's take a vote, please.
Council members, Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
That one passes eight to zero. On to item 36, please.
Item 36, second reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at the southwest corner of East 6th Street and North Wildcat Drive from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District, number 14573-2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval three to zero, private applicant, Mystic Heights LLC, Preston Mettler.
The applicant and owner here is Preston Mettler. It's located north of East Arrowhead Parkway and east of North Veterans Parkway. It's about 2.95 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at constructing some twin homes on that RD1 portion.
All right. Thank you, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one? Counsel, any questions here tonight?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Jensen.
All right. Motion by Erickson, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion on that motion? All right. Hearing none. We'll take a vote, please.
Council members, Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
That one passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item 37, second reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 735 South Glendale Avenue from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District, number 14576-2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval three to zero, private applicant, Southeastern Development Foundation, Lynn Keller Forbes.
The applicant here is Seacog. The owner is Janelle Songstead. It's located at 735 South Glendale Avenue. It's about .11 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is Seacog is looking to move a single-family home on this lot that's less than 50 feet wide.
Thank you, Jason. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item? Counsel, any questions here?
Move approval. Second, Jensen.
All right. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen to approve this item. Any discussion? All right. Let's take a vote, please.
Council members, Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Okay. That item passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item 38, second reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located southeast of West 69th Street and South Tallgrass Avenue from the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District to the LW Live Work District, number 14587-2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval three to zero, private applicant, Creston Capital Holdings, Erica Malali.
The applicant here is Creston Capital Holdings. The owner is University of Northwestern out of St. Paul. It's located at the southeast corner of West 69th Street and South Tallgrass Avenue. It's about 10 and a half acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking to develop a future office and multifamily development on the lot.
All right. Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item here? All right, Counsel. Any questions tonight?
Move approval. Nitzer. Second, Kylie.
Motion by Nitzer, seconded by Kylie. Is he going to get that one? Any discussion on that? All right. We'll take a vote, please.
Council members, Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. On to item 39, please.
Item 39, second reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located north of East 61st Street and west of South Sycamore Avenue from the RD2 Townhome Residential Suburban District and the RA3 Apartment Residential High Density District to the RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density District, number 14598-2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval three to zero, private applicant, Creston Capital Holdings, Kelly Greer.
The applicant is also Creston Capital Holdings on this one. The owner is RMB Associates. It's located west of South Sycamore Avenue and north of East 61st Street. It's about one acre in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at constructing two four-unit, three-story townhomes on the lot.
All right. Thank you, Jason. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item here? Counsel, questions for Jason on this?
Move approval.
Second, Sale.
All right. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Sale to approve this item. Any discussion on that? All right. Let's take a vote, please.
Council members, Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Okay. That passes eight to zero. Item 40.
Item 40, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota approving a grant of easement for sanitary sewer. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 10, 2021. Private applicant, Smithfield Package Meats Corporation.
Andy, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Andy Berg, City Engineering. This is an easement the city would be granting to Smithfield Corporation for their outfall from their sanitary sewer discharge. Currently, the discharge goes to the west, and through discussions with the DNR, with the state, the designations of the river channels are different for drinking water rules, and moving this to the north side removes some of those rules that apply. It's a bit of a technical issue, but on our side, we support it because this will now be an updated outfall that'll be better for our levee system. It'll be properly installed with the Corps of Engineers' review of that, so we would support the granting of this new easement for that new outfall.
All right. Thank you, Andy. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Counsel, you have any questions for Andy here? All right. Look for a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 10?
Move to approve, Brecky.
Second, Sale.
All right. Motion by Brecky, seconded by Counselor Sale. Any discussion on that motion? All right. Let's vote, please.
Council members, Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item 41, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota establishing the tax increment revenues to be collected and authorizing the payment of tax increment revenues to Sharapa Two QOZB LLC in accordance with the development agreement for tax incremental district number 25, city of Sioux Falls. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 17, 2021. Private applicant, Sharapa Two QOZB LLC.
Good evening, Dustin. Dustin Powers, Planning and Development Services. Tonight is related to tax increment finance district number 25 to the city of Sioux Falls. This would be related to the Sharapa Place development. The project will be located on approximately 10 acres along the East Bank area of downtown. The TIF request is for $25,375,592 plus the cost of financing. Those funds would go to support the structured and surface parking that would be throughout the site to support the density of the site. Non-leased parking stalls during the day would be available to the public, so those surface stalls along the streets would be made available. Some of those would be made available during the day to the public's use, and then the leased parking stalls that are in the parking structures would be made available to the public after 5:00. Also related to the TIF funding is the connectivity related to the development. So on the screen and the site plan, you can see a north-south connection, which would be a future extension of Reed Street that would connect A Street to Sixth Street. And then on the far east side or the right-hand side of the screen, you can see where Rail Yard Flats is. There's already a connection that goes from A Street to the north side of Rail Yard Flats that's under construction. This would extend that all the way to Sixth Street, as well as creating a connection east and west, which would kind of be the Seventh Street corridor that would connect through the developments. And then also a part, again, of the TIF request and the funding would be the relocation of utilities on the site, as well as site work, grading, and other aspects to prepare the site for development. So if you recall from an informational on May 18, Jeff Scherschlicht, representing the development team, was here and presented the overall project concept. I'm going to go through the next few images of the project, just to kind of brief everyone again of the details. On this slide here, we're looking from the west bank of the river towards the east bank. You can see on the right-hand side is Sharapa One, which is currently existing today. On the left-hand side would be Building Two, which is a nine-story building, roughly 130,000 square feet of office space, 20,000 square feet of retail restaurant space, as well as residential condos on top. This next image would be looking from the south to the north along Reed Street. So again, you can see Building Two on the left-hand side of the screen. Building Three is in the background on the right-hand side of the screen. That is an eight-story building with roughly 25,000 square feet of commercial space and 50 apartment rental units on top. Underneath all of that is a 300-spaced parking structure. This image here is kind of flipping it, so now we're on the north side of Reed Street. So again, on the left-hand side is another image of the Building Three that we just discussed. And in the background there, you can see Building Four, which is a seven-story structure, 100 rental apartments with that building, 3,000 to 5,000 square feet of commercial space, and then roughly 375 parking stalls within a parking structure that would be underneath that building. Overall total, there's roughly 900-plus parking stalls between the two parking structures and the surface parking that'll be located on site. Again, that, as part of the development agreement, would be open to the public's use during certain periods of time. And then the overall investment of the expansion of all three buildings for Sharapa Place here is over $160 million of investment. So the items for TIF consideration in front of the city council will be the TIF 25 district boundaries, the TIF 25 project plan, and the TIF 25 development agreement. The development agreement is on your agenda tonight as a first reading. Actually, the boundary and the project plan are Exhibit A and B of the development agreement, so you do have those in front of you here tonight. At the city council meeting on August 17, that would be the second reading of the development agreement. We would also have two resolutions that would have to come forward, according to state codified law, that would require the approval of the district boundaries and the project plan. So similar process that we've used in the past is to bring all of those at the same meeting for your consideration. But I will go through each of them briefly here for you tonight, starting with the proposed district. So the proposed tax increment district is, again, roughly 10 acres. It encompasses 11 parcels on the East Bank area. If we were to look at the property taxes currently generated by those 11 parcels, it roughly collects $450,000 today. If actually we were to remove Sharapa One from that area, the surrounding roughly nine acres would only generate about $50,000. So really, when we look at the overall district, very underutilized in terms of property taxes being generated by the development within this district. So again, the TIF request would be for the $25.3 million plus the cost of financing to support the site work, the parking, both structured and surface, the roads and connectivity through the site, as well as the utility relocations. Following the development of the three structures we previously discussed, there will be an added $1.9 million of estimated property taxes collected after completion. That would ultimately be the increment that would then be used to pay back for the TIF amount of $25.3 million. We also have to look at when we're considering a TIF district is, South Dakota codified law, 1198, talks about what's needed to create a district. There's two criteria for that, that either one needs to be met, that either not less than 25% of the property is considered blighted, or that over 50% of the property, once development occurs, will be promoting economic welfare and prosperity to the state. Based on the improvements that are being proposed and the ultimate substantial increase to the property taxes and value generated, we do believe it meets the economic development well support for the state as well as the city, therefore meets the statutory requirements for approval of a tax increment district. The second item related to the TIF is the project plan. The project plan outlines a number of items that are required by, again, codified law. It talks about the proposed improvements that we just discussed, the economic feasibility of the TIF, the tax increment district, so will the improvements and the increment collected pay off the TIF amount that's being requested? A detailed list of, again, the project costs, not only what's being requested as eligible expenses, but the overall project cost. A fiscal impact statement, so what the impact will be on the taxing entities after the TIF district is closed, and then as well as a description of the method of financing. So this will be a developer-funded TIF, which is consistent with the majority of the TIFs that we have approved here at the city of Sioux Falls. It also goes into the existing uses and the future uses of the site, showing the proposed improvements. It talks about any zoning changes. This is all within our downtown planned unit development, so we don't predict any zoning changes needed for this development. It does look at whether it's consistent with our master plans. So with this, we looked at our 2040 comprehensive plan, our 2025 downtown plan, forty comprehensive plan, our two thousand and twenty-five downtown plan, as well as the rail yard redevelopment plan that was adopted for this area. And in all of those, this project is consistent and meets the goals and objectives of those plans. And then we also look at non-project costs, as well as whether we're relocating any housing or anything, which is not associated with this project. To go into a little detail about a couple of those areas, first, looking at the TIF eligible expenses for the project. So when we looked in, at all of the improvements and what is eligible related to codified law, there was fifty-six million dollars identified as eligible expenses throughout the site that could be used and supported by TIF. The TIF request is at twenty-five million, plus to the cost of financing, so less than, and there are sufficient eligible expenses according to what's being requested here. And again, typically when we review these, we look at the TIF amount as what's actually needed, what's the financial gap that's needed to be filled to move this project forward. This slide here shows the fiscal impact. So what this looks at is, this is looking at really the first stabilized years. Obviously, once the development occurs, it takes several years, two or three years for the construction of these buildings. And then by the time that gets on the tax rolls, it's a couple of years later. So once we have a, the first true year of taxes being collected, this is showing that one point nine million dollar payment, and how it would affect those taxing entities after the district is dissolved. What'll actually occur is that, over time, the twenty years of period of the TIF, it'll be much greater than actually the one point nine we're showing on the screen. We project that to probably be well over two million, probably two point five million by the time the twenty-year period is up. So the amounts going to these taxing entities at the end of the district would be much greater than what's shown on the screen. But we do show this just as our fiscal impact in our project plan. So with any TIF, we do our, our normal standard evaluation. We look at the project financials, determine what the financial gap is and what's really needed to support the project and be able to move it forward. We look at what the eligible expenses are and the TIF funding. So obviously, again, this funding would be going towards parking, site work, roads, and connectivity, as well as the utilities of the site. We look at the benefits of the project and what it has on the area. This will provide additional public parking in the area to really support the density that's being proposed as part of the development. This will really activate a underutilized area of town, or downtown, by really creating a greater density, and again, supporting a mix of uses, so not just commercial but residential, as well as retail and office. We also look at whether it's going to further stimulate economic development in the city. And then specifically with this one, we looked at how this relates to the rail yard redevelopment area, because two acres of this development project is part of the rail yard redevelopment area. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in the next couple of slides. So historically, when we look at TIF in Sioux Falls, there's really kind of three categories we've kind of looked at in the past on how to utilize TIF, how to encourage redevelopment of deteriorated or blighted areas of town, how to stimulate economic development in our community, or really how to stimulate or increase private investment in areas where they may not do such a grand project, or they may not do a project at all. So how can we encourage development in our, in our area that would support the tax revenues of all the taxing entities in the future? And again, as we look at this, we do believe that it meets those criteria that we've set forth in the past. So the development agreement in front of you tonight is, again, a developer-funded TIF. The TIF's increment financing request is for twenty-five million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars, plus the cost of financing, again, to support the parking site work, as well as connectivity and infrastructure needed for the development. The requirements, again, on the developer, as with any, is to complete the improvements, the parking availability. So again, the surface parking that's on the site, there'll be surface parking available during the day for the public to use to really support the retail, commercial aspects of the development. After five, the structured parking would become available during the day. That would support the office tenants, and then after five, it would be open and available to the public to utilize. Completion of connectivity through the site, so very important in our rail yard redevelopment plan. As we looked at our rail yard redevelopment area, we did not just look at the property the city owns, but we looked at the entire, really, east bank area. That area is not really built on a grid system like the rest of our downtown. It's very limited in connection. So we have Sixth and Eighth Streets and Reed Streets to Tenth, but not a whole lot of north-south connectivity for traffic or for pedestrians. And so it was very important that we incorporate the connectivity that Jeff has brought forward as part of the Sharapa Place development. And then, again, placing the responsibility on the developer for this being a developer-funded TIF is their responsibility for repayment. So the last item I would highlight, again, that this is related to the rail yard redevelopment area. If you recall from two thousand and nineteen, when Jeff came forward with rail yard flats, we, we did sell two acres of the land to him at that time to build rail yard flats, which is nearing completion. And at that time, we also entered into an option to purchase agreement for the north two acres, north of rail yard flats, south of Sixth Street. And so according to that agreement, he would need to come forward to us with a proposal of a project, and then ultimately, city council would have to support that project in the development agreement in order for him to have the ability to exercise his option and purchase the property. So this, in your development agreement, one of the exhibits is actually the option to purchase that was previously approved. They'll be, he'll be responsible for the commitments that were in there, as well as the commitments of the development agreement as we move forward. So with that, again, this is the first reading. We're looking for second reading on August seventeenth, in which we'll go through all of the TIF items again at that time.
All right. Thanks, Dustin. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Come on up.
Good evening. Joe Bachelor with downtown Sioux Falls. I tell you, I look at these renderings and I get excited by this. I look at those public spaces that are created here, and I want to be there. I want to experience this. I think a lot of us do. I think we get the idea of, of how transformational this could be for downtown. And this TIF district is very important to this project moving forward. Dustin did a great job of laying out why it's important, circulation of downtown, extending utility services, expanding parking. And without this TIF district, we don't get the scale of development that we see here. Without this TIF district, we don't, we don't get the vibrancy, we don't get the economic activity that this development proposal is going to provide. We don't get the jobs per acre. We don't get the revenue, the sales tax revenue per acre, the property tax revenue per acre, the residential units per acre. So it's, it's about scale. This TIF district allows this site to be developed to its greatest potential. And so, on behalf of downtown Sioux Falls Incorporated, I urge you to support this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Joe. Anyone else here to speak on this item? All right, councillors. Any questions for Dustin on this first reading? Go ahead, councillor Erickson.
Thanks, Dustin. Thanks, Mayor. Dustin, can you pull up the map again? That shows the yellow outline. I'm sure there's a very good reason for it, but can you tell me why? Oh, go back there. Why it jogs on Sixth Street there?
Yeah. So one of the things that we want to at least make an option available through some of the, how we get utilities to the site, is some of that may occur within the Sixth Street right-of-way. And so we did incorporate the right-of-way. This, we have done that in other instances, too, when there's more. So there's not really, it's not really going to any of the roadway improvements or anything there, but there may be utilities, depending on how the site's served, that would have to come from there. And the utilities are on the, it'd be the east side of the tracks right now. So to be able to extend those along Sixth Street, if that is the route we decide to go, we just wanted to make sure that it was in the district in case we needed to do that.
That makes sense. Thank you for clarifying that. I didn't know if it was maybe the quiet zones or some of the things that we've been talking about, too. So thank you for that clarification. I'm excited for this project. And just keep going. Just keep going. This is awesome. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, councillor. Other questions? Councillor Knightzert?
Yeah, I know this started a long time before this, but in two thousand and seventeen, I was on an RFP for the rail yard, and this started, and so it's, it's finally getting there. As it relates to parking, when you mentioned structured parking, I assumed that, does that include any underground parking? I think it was mentioned there is some underground parking.
There would be underground parking, under Building Two, and then there's possibly, they're looking at doing underground parking under the other two buildings. We'd consider that conditioned parking, because likely that's going to be reserved and blocked off for residential parking, so, or, or office tenant parking. So if there is underground, likely that'll be sectioned off to where that portion is, is not open to the public. But the numbers that I shared were the above-ground parking.
Okay. So the above-ground structured, all of the at-grade, street parking?
Yeah.
That's eligible, but is the underground not eligible cost?
Well, the underground parking wouldn't be, yeah, it wouldn't be supported by the tax increment financing.
Yeah, that's what I was getting.
For private use. Now, if it's, now if they decide to open it for the public, it could be considered.
It could be.
Part of the number of parking stalls, yeah.
But typically, like, an underground, like, under, you know, like a cascade, it's for the tenants. So they do have a piece.
So we can, we can, yeah, we typically support with stuff like that. We'll support, like, the, the site work to excavate, because we know that it's difficult to excavate in downtown.
Yes.
But the actual, you know, payment for actual construction of stalls. So we can do things like shoring and infrastructure, utility relocations, and grading, and blasting or whatever's needed. Environmental remediation is a big one usually as well. So again, all of those things come up. It would be similar to, yeah, cascades was, you know, it didn't, it supported all of those elements, but not the actual parking itself. And the same thing, like, for, if we were to look at Washington Square, we supported the structure above, but not the underground below.
Exactly. Sounds good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, councillor. Other questions, council, for Dustin here? All right. Look for a motion to set a date a second reading for Tuesday, August seventeen here.
Move to approve, Brecky.
Second, Erickson.
All right. Motion by Brecky, seconded by Erickson on that. Any discussion there? Councillor Brecky, go ahead.
I just want to say, in my discussions that we've had, and we've all had individual discussions with the developer and detailed explanations of this, and so all have reason to be very excited about, about it. I think we all want to go there, too. We want to be there. But I would say this, one of the things that, that I learned from talking to Mr. Scherschlich was, you know, it's about two parts, you know, savvy development, two parts patience, and two parts sheer luck, that he was able, over time, to put a project like this together. And I think it's worth noting, it's not like there's just this one big piece of land sitting out there for this big project to happen on. I mean, he waited, told us for fifteen years, you know, with an option, you know, until this particular business was ready to go, and, you know, had the patience and the ability to do that, and then is able to bring to us a full-fledged, you know, fabulous project with all the mixed uses, that's just going to, it's going to change the skyline, you know, of downtown Sioux Falls when you look back on it from the falls. You know, that and what, you know, Mr. Lloyd is doing as well is exciting. So I'm happy to support it, and I'm, I'm, again, it's kind of a God thing. I think that it should all come together for him like that. But I'm just, I think we, as a city, are truly the beneficiary of that two parts luck, two parts savvy, and, you know, just two parts darn good planning. So really appreciate the effort and the timing, the patience, and what you've put together is a really exciting project. All the pieces to the puzzle have finally come to play, and, and we're going to be the beneficiaries of that. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, councillor. Any other discussion, council, on this? Councillor Kylie, go ahead.
Again, I would just, as Dustin pointed out, I'd just like to point out again that this request is just half of what is actually eligible for a TIF request. And for that reason, I commend Mr. Scherschlich. Could have, could have doubled it. And the future revenues for this property, the one point nine to two point five in, in potential tax revenues that far outpaces what is currently being collected on this, so it means the return on interest on, on this is great. And it's a, and beyond all of that, it's going to be a great benefit to the public, so. And that's obvious to me. If it's not to others, I believe it should be. And for that reason, I'm going to support this item.
All right. Thank you, councillor. Any other discussion, council, on this? All right. Let's take a vote, then.
Council members Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item forty-two, a resolution declaring certain real property of the city's surplus and authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement for auctioneer services. Sponsor is the mayor.
Hey, Andy.
Good evening. Andy Berg, City Engineering. This property is at the intersection, just to the west of I twenty-nine on the north side of eighty-fifth Street. This area is in the footprint of the future I twenty-nine, eighty-fifth Street interchange. This property and the one adjacent to it were purchased by the city as part of that project due to impacts from the interchange project, the proposed interchange design. The, the house in question was purchased, has, through housing professionals' evaluation of it, determined to have a good value to it still, to be moved offsite. It's in a great location to move it, to being outside of town. And so we are looking to surplus this property and then auction it off to recover some of that purchased price.
All right. Thank you, Andy. All right. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Council, you got any questions for Andy here on this? Councillor Starr?
Mr. Mayor, actually, I have a question for the city attorney, and it's kind of a weird one, but aren't we doing two different things in this, in one resolution? We're surplusing property, and then we're doing a contract for services for, to, to sell the property? I get how they're related, but it, is it two different items, or is it one item that we're doing? We're doing multiple items in one resolution?
I'd ask Andy, has this been done before? Were you done both simultaneously? Because I haven't seen this one before.
We have not done the auctioneer piece before. We've done the surplusing. But the other op, item, other times we've surplus, it's been a donation to Southeastern Development Foundation, so I can't speak to the auctioneering side of it.
Well, and I guess I can't either at this point. It's a good question, as far as whether they're distinct or not at any look, but at this point, I don't know.
All right. Is, are there other questions on this? Okay. Look for a motion then to approve or amend this item, and then?
Move to approve.
Second, Jensen.
All right. Councillor Kylie votes to approve, and councillor Jensen moves to second that. Councillor Brecky?
Just another question, you know, for the city attorney. Is there a way that we might split it into two motions? I mean, it's all been noticed. Can we split it into separate motions and vote on it separately, try to cure it as best we can? Because it does feel like we're doing two things.
Yeah.
Normally, we would do separately, but I, I don't want to get a fly in the ointment. But if there's something we can do procedurally, just to bust the thing into two motions, and I, I'd like to try that, and I'd be glad to just move to approve them separately.
Yeah, and I would agree from an amendment point of view that that, I agree they're both motioned, or noticed, rather. And as far as an amendment goes, as opposed to doing them simultaneously, it may be form over substance, but at the end of the day, either way, I think is fine, so.
I.
But, I mean.
Sorry. I, I, if I can chime in, Mr. Mayor, for my, I'm not trumping what you say or anything like that. I'm not going against that. I'm just speaking as my input to this motion. I understand where there might be some pause, but I'm confident in voting in it together, because it's signed off by legality informed by the attorney's office. They reviewed it. They've looked at it. And if there's not an issue coming out of that office, they would have told us about it. And so I guess I'll, I'll be supporting it as is, because that's my checks and balance, I guess, if you.
And that's, and that's where I'd point out, kind of the form or substance component to it, because I was gone, so I haven't seen this one. It was signed off on. So I do think either way, if there's a concern about it, from a distinction point of view, I think that's within the realm of the council's discretion. But at this point, I think you're fine either way.
I'd like to make a motion to amend. I'd like to amend the resolution so that we're voting on the portion of the resolution that allows us to declare certain property, certain real property of the city's surplus. And I'd like to make, you know, just amend that portion out into a separate motion and vote on that separately. And then I will make another motion to do the other half.
So since we have a motion on the floor to approve, can, can your motion be to amend out the auctioneer services piece from the existing motion?
Yes. I would ask that my motion be conformed to your statement.
Got it.
Second, Starr. All right. Motion by Brecky, seconded by councillor Starr to amend out the agreement for auctioneer services of the existing motion.
Mr. Mayor, I have a.
Councillor Erickson, go ahead.
Question for the parliamentary, that then the other part that was, the auction services that were removed, wouldn't that technically go under new business? How, how do we just add a new item?
I think.
Even though it was noticed?
I think similar to what we did a while back with one of the citizen boards. Essentially, what we're doing is dividing the question, which I think would be permissible. And so I would just recommend councillor and mayor, if there just be a motion to divide the question into declaring certain property surplus and authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement. You all vote on the motion to divide the question, and then we vote on part one first, and then part two second, and it's done.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. So moved.
Got it. So the motion on the floor is to divide the, divide the questions. Is that right, Tom?
Yes.
Okay. And that's your motion, councillor Brecky?
Yes.
Okay. And do I have to do anything with those existing motions that are on the floor? Are we just?
No.
Okay.
If we, presuming she withdraws her first one.
You're withdrawn.
And then we would just need a second.
Second, Starr. Okay. I think I'm following all this right now. I think I'm following all this right now.
Just to vote on that.
Okay, so we need, we have a motion and a second to split the item.
And, yes.
Okay.
Any vote?
Okay, and I need a vote on that, please.
Councillor Members Nightser?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. So now I would entertain a motion to vote on the declaration of surplus property.
So moved, Brecky.
Second, Starr. All right, motion by Brecky, seconded by Starr to approve the declaration of surplus property for the site. Any discussion on that? All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote on that, please.
Councillor Members Nightser?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
All right, that one passes eight to zero. Would also then entertain a motion to enter into an agreement for auctioneer services as outlined by Andy.
So moved, Jensen.
Second, Kylie.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Kylie on that item. Any discussion there? Councillor Starr, do you have a question?
Well, yeah, I thought that's what we just did. When we divided it, we divided it for surplus.
We have to do.
Divided it for, I'm good.
So motion to divide, which we agreed to.
Gotcha.
Now we're voting on the two items. See, exactly.
Thank you.
So, okay, any other discussion on the auctioneer piece? All right, we'll take a vote on that, please.
Councillor Members Nightser?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
All right, that one passes eight to zero. Move on to item 44, please.
Item 44, a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rescheduling the business of the city from Tuesday, October 19th, 2021 to Monday, October 18th, 2021. Sponsor is councillor members Sale and Jensen. I will speak to it.
Tom?
Mayor, if I could, mayor and city council, this, the chamber annual meeting is scheduled for October 19th. So typically, the city council will attend that. And as in the past, we move the meeting up one day to Monday. That's what this resolution does, same time.
Who's Monday night football that night, you know?
You could amend it.
Okay. All right, so that's the motion. Anyone, or skip not the motion, the item, anyone here to speak on that item? All right, councillors, any questions or that? We'll go ahead and get into a motion on it.
Move.
Approval?
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Sale to approve this item. Any discussion there? All right, we'll vote on that, please.
Councillor Members Nightser?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
That one passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
The next item is new business, mayor.
Is it? Item 45?
Then, assuming there's no business, item 45.
Any new business? Hearing none. Now we'll move to item 45.
Item 45, set a date of hearing for Tuesday, August 17th, 2021. Special one-day malt beverage license for T-Slat Incorporated to be operated at Kirkaby Over Stadium, 2700 South Lake Avenue for a football game on September 4th, 2021.
Jamie's going to speak to this one for us. Good evening.
Good evening, Jamie Palmer with Licensing. This item was received late into my office. However, luckily enough, it was received early enough that it could be set up on this agenda in this fashion so that it could be, that it could be, have a hearing date on August 17th, so it could be approved before the event. So thank you for considering this item.
Thank you, Jamie. I know you had to do a little wrangling to make this work, so thank you. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item? All right, councillors, do you have any questions on this one? Councillor Nightser?
Well, I, I can't, I have to admit a sense of deja vu when I got the email about this. Just a reminder, I guess, that people should be cognizant of due dates and, because they don't want to go without a license, so.
Yes, yes, thank you. Questions on this item? I'd look for a motion, the motion would be set a date of hearing for Tuesday, August 17th on this.
So moved, Nightser.
Second, Sale.
All right, motion by Nightser, seconded by Sale on this one. Any discussion councillor here? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councillor Members Nightser?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Okay, that one passes eight to zero. We are now at the general public input portion of our agenda. Just a reminder, input during this portion will last no more than three minutes per person. So anyone for general public input tonight? Come on up.
As I mentioned before, three minutes is not adequate enough and that needs to be taken into consideration. How many members here are really taking me seriously about my concerns? Rent control, insurance options, and the transit system. Now, we all know that elections are not that too far, are not that far away. We need to pay attention to the needs of the people. And okay, I might be outside of the realm of things like, you know, parking spots or real estate property, et cetera, but things like rent control, insurance paid by individuals is extremely important and you need to take this on the agenda. And I would hate to know that I have to gather more than 3,000 signatures, which is really kibbles and bits, to go ahead and during the next election cycle, just really shift the landscape considerably just to get to the things that I believe are important to the people, not just to me. So where do we stand now with regards to rent control, not having to pay $1,170 per month because there are only two options for insurance, and then really ridiculous public transportation, particularly that SAM, SAM on demand on Saturdays? So what is the process here in order to get these things addressed?
It's not a dialogue, sir, it's one-way. So you can continue talking.
Okay, so then it's not a dialogue. So I want these things to be addressed because they are important and I can go ahead and get as many signatures as I need in order to get things done, even if it has to be a recall or whatever, because I want these things to be addressed. So, you know, and I will come back every Tuesday leading up to election, if I'm not going to get things done, get somebody in here, in these receipts that will address these issues because they are that important. So if there's no dialogue, I don't know what the protocol is, but where do, where do, I mean, there has to be some process. I'm trying to give you an opportunity to try to work with me to get these things addressed. But if it's just a one-way dialogue, that's, that's not very significant in terms of getting things done. So what is the process? This, I think you should have a departure from whether there's a dialogue or not. What do we need to do to have these things addressed? And I'm speaking more pointedly to you because you're the mayor.
Anything else?
No, those are the only three.
Thank you.
I don't have a problem getting signatures. I can get 300,000 if necessary, so 3,000 is really kind of like, not really a real effort.